Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zubor.
Here. And just for the record, we also have our staff members Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schluto here, and we have our legal consultant Courtney Agrusa from Foster Swift. So, thank you for being here. We have some minutes from January 22nd in our packet. Does anyone want to make a motion about those?
I move to approve the minutes.
All right.
Support.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Egenberger to approve the minutes of January 22nd. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. And we have an agenda this evening that, thank you for clarifying the agenda for us, because there was a little confusion. But it looks like we just have two items of old business. One is the springs at Willow Creek, and the other is the master plan discussion. Patrick, do you have anything to add to that at the last minute, or?
Yes, it looks like we had an item that should have been on the agenda for the EV charging station ordinance. And let me see if... We had this as item number two in the packet. We must have had an older agenda. So, but it'll be a short discussion for EV charging. So, what I would recommend, and this would be under old business, so I would recommend including EV charging zoning ordinance under item two, and then moving master plan discussion to item three.
There's nothing in the packet for master plan discussion. That was one of the questions I had when I emailed you. So, is that indeed part of the agenda tonight?
Just a short discussion only.
Okay.
Nothing to present.
Okay. Thank you.
I move that we accept the motion.
Right? Okay, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Egenberger and support by Commissioner Watkins? Is that correct? Okay, very good. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And do we have any communications we should know about besides the one you sent us just a little while ago?
No, nothing other than the public comment that was received today for the Springs project.
Okay, thank you. All right. And we have a public comment session on agenda items only. So, if there's anybody here who isn't going to speak on any agenda items, feel free to speak now or forever hold your peace, all three of you. Okay. So, I guess we don't have any public comment. Very good. All right. So, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move right into old business. The first item of old business is item 049-PDDA-8065. That is the springs at Willow Creek. We are considering a PDD amendment and site plan for parcels, as noted there. I'm not going to read all of them. The property is located on the east side of Lot's Road between Ford and Cherry Hill. The proposed use is new construction of 280 rental units, attached apartments, and a clubhouse. Patrick, I know we tabled this from last time, so please refresh our memories.
Sure, thank you. At the previous meeting, we had tabled this item that was earlier this month, and it was tabled because there were a number of items that were in the staff report that needed to be addressed. And so, at the meeting earlier this month, February 5th, I think it was, we had recommended approval if the other items were satisfied, and we had a number of conditions associated with the model motion. And given the number of conditions, as well as some of the items that the Planning Commission wanted to see on revised plans, the Planning Commission adopted a motion to postpone action on the application to tonight's meeting, at which time we would review the changes and determine if the application is ready to proceed. So, I'll bring up the plan itself, and I'll go through some of the major changes that we've seen. So, one of the major changes has been the location of new masonry piers for the fencing. And the fencing changes have been made based on the Planning Commission's discussion at the previous Planning Commission meeting. So, what that entails is along the frontage of Lot's Road, there is the decorative fence with masonry piers. The masonry piers are spaced about every 56 feet apart, and those are in more detail on the landscape plans. So, the decorative fence with the masonry pier is only along the frontage of Lot's Road. Our staff report had some language that wasn't clear about the location of the decorative fence and masonry piers, and so I just wanted to clarify that. The fencing with the masonry piers is along Lot's Road only. And then, after Lot's Road going interior to the site eastward, the plans call out, and I'll zoom it in here, the end of the decorative fence and the beginning of the chain link. So, I'll start here at the north end of the site, the entrance of the site. And so, as the site is entered, and there's the gate at the front, along this frontage are the masonry piers. And then, as you go into the frontage, there's the decorative fence. And the decorative fence here does not include the piers. It's just decorative fence to tie in the front to the side. And then, after the decorative fence is to the rear of the pool and the clubhouse, that's where it converts to chain link fence, four-foot-high, black vinyl-coated chain link.
Patrick, could you please clarify which sheet you're looking at?
Yes, it's sheet three in the site plan materials.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, 19 to the packet.
Yeah, we want to follow along at home here. Yeah. I was looking at the landscape plans, because you said that there was a better image on them, and so I was confused. Okay.
Okay. And then, on this sheet three, at the bottom of the page, at the south end of the property here, is where the fence, these little squares inside the fence, those represent the piers. So, along Lot's Road, the decorative fence is there with the piers. And then, the fence line with the circles, that represents decorative but without piers. And so, on the south line, the decorative fence continues along the south line until it is east of Building Four. And then, once it's east of Building Four, and the fence goes from west to east, and instead goes from south to north, that's where it converts to chain link. And then, so the fence will, is proposed to remain as chain link throughout the interior of the site until it gets to the rear of the site on the east side. And here on the east side is shown the 40-foot rear yard setback. And what it shows is that within this rear yard setback area, there is the break between the chain link fence to the west and the decorative fence to the east. So, the fencing that will abut the residential development to the east in the city westland will have decorative fence, as well as the rear yard setback that abuts that area. Another item that has been updated is along that fence line of Lot's Road, in front of the fence facing Lot's Road, there's a dense shrub row. And that shrub row will conceal the fence and make it look a little bit softer in appearance. Also, the fence was lowered from five feet, proposed at the previous meeting, to four feet proposed tonight. So, the difference between four and five feet is pretty stark, especially to a pedestrian who's walking, where five feet to a lot of people, that can be eye level. Four feet, most can see over it, and so it gives a more decorative appearance when it's four feet instead of five.
Patrick, there was one really nice picture that I can't seem to find that had a picture of the shrubbery was drawn in, and then you could really see the masonry on the fence.
So, it's in that attachment he sent us just before the meeting.
Oh, it was in the attachment. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It was today's thing. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll bring that up here. That's a good point.
I knew I saw it.
There we go. This is a presentation that was sent to us from the applicant for tonight's meeting. So, I think that they were intending to present this, but I wanted to have this to the Planning Commissioners beforehand in case there was anything you wanted to study or review. So, I'm glad you had an opportunity to look at that. And so, in this image right here is the shrub row illustrated where the shrubs are grown in, and the row complements the fence in terms of the height and appearance.
A lot of hydrangeas.
Pardon?
A lot of hydrangeas, if that's what those are.
One other item that was raised to some degree at the previous meeting was the entrance off of Lot's Road. And in previous versions of the plan, going back all the way from the first plan development plan, the entrance from the site didn't have tapers or dedicated turn lanes, right turn in. And it was just shown as it's been presented for the plans this month. And so, along the way, the thought has been that there weren't tapers or turn lanes proposed, but because Lot's Road is a county road, and it's under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, Wayne County would impose any kind of requirements that it would have for tapers. And so, the Wayne County Department of Public Services has reviewed the plans. They have a consultant that reviewed the plans, OHM Engineering. And OHM has reviewed the plans on behalf of Wayne County, and they have indicated that there's a requirement for tapers at the entrance here. So, they had sketched those in just to kind of illustrate it, but what they're showing here are 75-foot tapers, both inbound and outbound from the site. So, that is an update that we received recently from Wayne County that we wanted to include in this report, because that was an item that was discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting in terms of access and traffic impact. And I think the final major point that we had discussed at the previous meeting was the architecture. And the architectural palette, a lot of it is still the same in terms of what's proposed by the applicant. They proposed some decorative elements to the buildings in terms of light fixtures and some other architecture. And some of the color schemes have changed to incorporate some of the lighter grays, or I guess call them a bluer gray, to add a little bit more variety in color compared to what was previously proposed. So, we don't have too many comments on that, just acknowledging that they were received for further discussion by the Planning Commissioners, because I think there was a pretty wide array of comments there. So, the updated elevations will give us some good topics of discussion. So, with that, I think that covered most of the major changes. I can go back to any other changes that they've done. Oh, also, I want to mention the parking. The applicants have striped in areas adjacent to buildings where parking will not be accommodated, just to clearly state that residents of the community can't park in front of the buildings where the spaces are shorter than 22 feet. And on that point, the applicants were able to revise the plans so that all spaces adjacent to garages were 22 feet deep. So, that had satisfied a previous staff comment, as well as a provision in the ordinance by shifting some items interior to the site to accommodate those longer lengths. So, there's no longer a modification request for the parking stall length. They all make 22 feet adjacent to those buildings. So, with that, staff's recommendation is approval if the plans and the architectural elevations are satisfactory. And if that's the case, we have three proposed conditions. The first is revising the PDD agreement to the satisfaction of legal counsel and planning division staff, including listing all modifications in Exhibit C. Second, adding stone wainscoting along the sides of the garage buildings and maintenance building. And third, revising the dumpster enclosure to comply with Section 2.14 of the zoning ordinance. Now, on the second point, with the stone wainscoting along the sides of the garage buildings and maintenance building, the applicants have indicated that there are plan revisions in the works to add that. So, the text of those plans indicates that those will be added. For the third point, the applicant is requesting a modification for the dumpster enclosure materials on the outside to allow for some siding over the CMU block instead of 100% masonry around the dumpster enclosures. Staff recommends masonry along the entirety of the outside of the enclosure, but that's a modification the Planning Commission can recommend if it wants to. So, the applicants are requesting the modification, so we'll defer to the Planning Commission on that. So, that concludes the staff comments, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Great. Did you guys have anything to add to what Patrick already said?
Wasn't there a question about the monument sign? They wanted...
I think my understanding is all of the, because we had a whole list of proposed changes last time, and I think, but you, anything that you didn't specifically mention as a proposed change, the conditions that you had in this model motion have been addressed.
Yes.
Okay. So, we've addressed all the other ones that we had in the last packet. Okay? Yeah, if you could go to the mic, please. Tell us who you are again.
I am Jordan Tyken with Continental Properties.
Jordan?
So, I'll just brush over what we had discussed previously, but happy to go back and talk about anything in greater detail. But again, I'm Jordan with Continental Properties. I'm joined by Bridget Wiesler with Continental, as well as Jared Keim, our civil engineer with Atwell. Next, please, Patrick. So, the site, I'm sure, as you're all familiar with, south of Willow Creek, east of Lot's Road. Next, please, Patrick. So, our site plan, there have been some minor modifications to stall depths and sidewalk widths, et cetera, from last time, but this is largely the same plan as last time. So, primary entrance off Lot's Road, greeted by a clubhouse with a 24-hour fitness center and pool. And then, interior to the community, there are 280 units, a mix of studio through three-bedroom apartment rental units. Next, please. So, this is a photo of a past community, and I specifically selected this one to give you some indication of the intent of our colors. I think it was mentioned last time that there was a community in Florida, specifically with lighter tones of gray that were desired. So, the gray that you're seeing here is the gray that we've selected for this building. What I'll add is the elevations that we are proposing incorporate a lot more masonry than what you're seeing here in this elevation. But these colors are somewhat indicative of ultimately what would be constructed. Next, please. So, here is our updated materials board. Two things that I'll highlight. So, again, in Scheme A, the board and baton siding, one, we've gone to a lighter shade of gray, argos gray. And then, in addition to that, on our Scheme A, instead of using the foothills brown for the doors, we've introduced that primary blue color to align with the board and baton siding on the other color scheme. So, the idea there is introducing the primary color to the door, and then lightening the overall look of the building. And again, we'd have two different color schemes throughout the community, so you wouldn't have two buildings, you know, directly adjacent to each other with the same color scheme. Next, please. So, this is the updated elevation. So, you can see these blue doors, as well as the lighter shade of gray. I'm happy to get into the details here. But next, please, Patrick. So, these are the side elevations, again, lighter gray, blue door. Next, please. So, this is the other scheme. This has not changed since last time. So, this is that same blue color, door color, masonry percentages, et cetera. Next, please. This is our updated clubhouse elevation, the front of the clubhouse. So, this is what you'd see when you pull in off of Lot's Road. And again, we've elected to use that lighter gray color on this elevation as well. Next, please. So, we can revisit the elevations, but quickly want to run through the other items. So, the other item that I know Patrick had already mentioned is the masonry piers along Lot's Road. So, we've introduced those. I believe they're 56 feet either, I can't recall, either on center or to the edge of the pier. That dimension was specifically selected to align with the panel length of the fence that we're using. And then, in addition to that, there is some plant material being proposed in front of it. I know that you had mentioned the hydrangeas. I'm not sure that this plan is indicative of the actual species.
I was there.
Yeah, that's going to be out there, but we can revisit any plant.
What's available in the software.
Yeah. So, yeah, happy to discuss this more, but that's the rendering of what it would look like along Lot's Road. Next, please. Last time, I know that there was a discussion on the type of fencing. So, in lieu of being able to bring in a large panel of fence here this evening, we did just include a photo. Ultimately, this is the alternative fence material, aside from the ornamental fence being proposed in the more visible areas that would surround the community. So, this would be, you know, adjacent to the stormwater pond, adjacent to the natural conservation easement area to the south. And then, this is also the material that would be used around our pet playgrounds internal to the site. Next, please. And that's really all we wanted to cover, as already discussed. All the items that were listed as motions previously, so increasing sidewalk widths for the more common areas, et cetera, all those were picked up and addressed in the plans. It's really the last items that Patrick has in the motion, and I can briefly speak to those. So, we are working through the PDD agreement with Township's legal counsel. They had provided a few comments that we're on board with, and are internal councils reviewing, but feel good about that. And then, in addition to that, as Patrick had mentioned, the other point was the wainscoting around the base of the garages. We did not have time to incorporate that into renderings prior to submitting this evening, but that will be incorporated. So, there will be masonry around our detached garages. And then, the last point is the masonry around the entirety of the trash enclosure, which is a point that's up for discussion this evening. What we would like to see is masonry around the sides of it and not on the back of the enclosure that's facing a less visible area. But again, up for discussion. So, with that, just as a reminder, we're here this evening to discuss the PDD amendment, as well as site plan review. So, thank you all, and look forward to discussing.
Thank you. And I want to acknowledge that we received an email communication from a homeowner that lives at the Point of Canton Apartments. Oh, I'm sorry, they live at the Cherry Hill Point condominiums. And they are expressing concerns about traffic on Lot's Road. So, they are requesting that we reject the proposed plan for the safety and welfare of residents, I think they mean residents, TS, not CE, in the area. So, noted. Anybody have anything they want to bring up? I'll just open the floor. Yeah, go ahead.
Super quick. Through the chair to the Continental team. Pat, if we can go back to the clubhouse, I just want to get some clarity from an ordinance standpoint on the three sides with the naming convention. At the very top of the clubhouse, I think it's pretty atypical here in Canton. And I wanted to ensure, along with the monument sign, we've already discussed that, that that's something that falls within the parameters of allowable. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Sure. We mean the wall signage?
Yeah, absolutely. I think if I'm not mistaken, on all three sides, that's going to be northwest and south-facing, it'll include, I can't, God, I've gotten all...
You're correct.
Springs, absolutely. Okay, yeah. So, just wanted to make sure it lines up with all things ordinance. Thank you.
Patrick, there's, I think there's a rendering at the end of this slide deck that shows the clubhouse in a perspective. If you want to pull that up, it may lend itself to this conversation as well.
Sure. I'm just going to look at... We have ground signage provisions for multifamily. I just want to see what the wall signage provisions are. For wall signage in this district, it allows for 24 square feet of wall signage, and it states one for the clubhouse, or one sign for the clubhouse or office for a development site. So, most likely, if there's signs on more than one side, our sign reviewer in the building division would probably flag this as only allowing for one wall sign. I don't know if there are any wall sign bonus areas that are allowed because of the corner configuration of the building, but that's something that we can investigate and, you know, if necessary, address either with a modification requirement or a revision of the plans if only one wall sign is necessary to identify the building.
Got it. Nothing further, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Good question. Okay. Commissioner Lee, you had a question or comment? Is your mic on?
Oh, it is. There you go. My only, by the way, the colors are better to me. I think that really helped. The other thing is more of the traffic. I see a description in your report, the planner, your report, Patrick, talking about the activity that's being built in this area, and that's my concern. I'm thinking of all the things that are at Lot, excuse me, at Ford Road that we're constructing. You got residential here, you got a client, a resident, south of here, who's complaining about traffic. That's my issue. All I really want is not to bother your development, but I want you to be aware of, you're going to have residents that are going to be complaining. And what I see as a result of that, I think, I don't know, you know, I'm guessing, but they're going to come here and say, "We need relief." And so, now we got to plan how to make all this work in that really dense area right now. I mean, it's going to be really dense in my mind. So, that's my concern, is I just want you guys to be, have your eyes open and look at this, because if you can work with them and yourself and the other residents, really come up with something that you really, this will be in before you can get the problem solved, is what I'm getting at. So, there's going to be some things going on. And they come to the city, I mean, the township, and they complain here, and that's what we're getting with the letters. So, I just get a hint that this might be an issue later. So, I just want you to go in wide open, you know, eyes open, knowing that this is happening.
Yep, understood, and, you know, definitely appreciate the concern. Again, like, I'm not an engineer, so that's why we brought the, you know, traffic consultant on, and then the county provided their review. So, hear you loud and clear. We certainly don't want it to be, you know, an issue that comes up with residents, but at this point, we're trying to, you know, do all of our due diligence to prevent that.
So, this came up last month, and, you know, Commissioner Watkins was the one who initially brought up the issue of the Lot's Road frontage with D cell lanes. And I know what the county's come back and said about the tapers, and that's fine. I think that has limited impact, to be honest with you. And I know what the traffic consultants say, and I'm not a traffic engineer. But to kind of add on to what Commissioner Lee is saying, we have this development, and the property, no matter what's going on across the street with our residents who have the property across the street, eventually that property's going to get developed. It may not be when any of us are sitting here, or whatever, but what I'm tired of seeing in Canton, and we're experiencing, we're living it with Ford Road...
in Canton, and we're experiencing, we're living it with Ford Road, I hate to see things get away from us. And then we have to go back and reinvent the wheel, basically. I mean, we've seen all the hassles that have been encountered trying to plan for this boulevard on Ford Road, where if a little forethought had been given before all the development happened on Ford Road, maybe we wouldn't have to do this now. I fear we're going to see the same thing on Cherry Hill and Warren Road at some point in that too distant future. But as it pertains to this project, I still don't think it's a bad idea to have the D cell lanes in front of the, in front of the development. And then if the property on the other side of Lots gets developed at some point, that developer should be responsible for that as well. I think we just need to be thinking ahead a little bit about traffic in this area. We have seen a significant increase in traffic on Lots Road since it was paved and widened. Commissioner Lee, I think you brought up the backup that happens at Lots and Ford Road with the left-hand turn signal.
Right now.
As it sits right now. So I just, I don't know if we can impose any of that on you, but I definitely think it's something that we need to be thinking about and before that we get, again, before it gets too far away from us.
Just one last thing. The only thing I picked up out of all the traffic studies I've looked at, they said Ford Road would be a level D. There are only two worser situations, E and F. Okay? So D's not good, okay? But that slipped over just like that, but I caught that when they did the presentation. That's why I'm concerned. It's like just enough to get us through. And now it's going to be just enough to make this whole thing work together. So that's the reason, and like you said, I don't see imposing that on you, but I just want you to be aware that you may be getting complaints.
Understood. Thank you.
Well, and then kind of related to the citizen comment we had in the email about, and I know the gist of it, a lot of it was related to traffic, but they also talked about, they were the impression that this would stay undeveloped forever and ever, but that's unrealistic. And I, you know, I had a discussion with Patrick before the meeting about, if you believe that to be true in a suburban area or highly developed area, then you probably need to do your due diligence before you buy there and look at what the master plan is. But looking at the master plan from when these condos, all these condos were developed along there, Patrick, I think someone can just take a look at that, and you can tell that it was anticipated that there's going to be a greater, a big increase in traffic. And paving Lots Road and widening it to three lanes was definitely a good start. But as that letter also points out, people use that road a lot more now, too. So I think we're already seeing the impacts of that. And I hate to keep harping on this, but it's, it's going to be a problem before it gets, before, if it's not addressed soon. And we're just, and then we're just exacerbating the problem on Ford Road.
Anyone else have anything?
I did.
Oh, okay.
I, I wish we had a magic solution to the traffic, but I don't think we do. I think that at this point, we can listen to what Wayne County's saying and do what they suggest and what we can ask for, but not sure we have a whole lot of control over some other parts. But I would like to say I'd like your new designs, and I especially like that you showed us the old designs, because too often they, people come in with the new designs and we're like, well, I don't have any idea what the old ones were, but we didn't like them. So thank you for doing that. And then I'm trying to figure out what the issue is here with the trash area. I've got it brought up. It's on page 59 in our packet.
Yeah, Patrick, if you pull up that architectural design, yep, there we go. So this is the way that it's detailed now, whereas I believe code would require masonry around the entirety of the trash enclosure. I mean, given the location that we have, and it may be worthwhile to jump to the site plan after we look at this, we feel that by, you know, surrounding it with landscaping, it being, you know, adjacent to a pet playground and conservation easement area, that it's not necessary to, you know, add that additional masonry around the trash enclosure.
So which, which part wouldn't have something? The rear elevation?
So what, yep, right. So the left and rear would be all stone, rather, that's what code calls for, rather than how it's currently shown. How it's currently shown is Continental's preference.
Would the right elevation be shown, I mean, are these drawings what you guys are proposing?
This is what we had submitted, correct, yep.
Oh, okay. So the, okay. And the logic behind having it masonry is it just more durable, more attractive? What's the reasoning for that?
Mostly to be consistent with the building. The durability, I think it'll be just as durable, because the inside of the dumpster is CMU block. And then even with the brick dumpsters, the inside is CMU block. And then once that's built, then the outside, there's brick around it. So it's durable in either case. This, for this one, it would be mostly aesthetics, where the ordinance has that requirement, where the three wall, on three sides, the walls have to have masonry that matches the principal building or buildings. And then the fourth side includes the gates. So on that right elevation, I think there's a, I think there's a pedestrian access there, but if, if these are bona fide walls, then that requirement would apply to them as well in terms of being masonry that matches the building. And then left elevation, rear elevation, the ordinance would require these to be all masonry matching the building.
Can you show us the location on the site plan then?
And could you show me a picture of what masonry you're talking about?
Yes.
Go to the north, so to the, yep, a little further north, right there. And this is the previous layout, I believe, if you, in the slide deck that I had put together, or this, yeah, this one.
I'll go to the site plan sheet here.
Oh, it's more of a 90-degree turn, yeah.
Yep. And so just, you know, our thought process is given that it's sort of talked away, and what this plan does not show is, is the landscaping. It'll be screened, and then, you know, to the east is a conservation easement. You know, we feel that it's, you know, added expense that, you know, wouldn't, you know, wouldn't necessarily make a difference to our residents, given that we'd be screening it with landscaping.
Through the chair.
In your one elevation.
Yep, yep. So the alternative material would be the fiber cement board-on-board panel. So the same, it would, it would be the same siding in our, in our residential building materials.
What's the masonry you're talking about, Patrick?
Yeah, I'll bring up the...
I assume it's like what's on the piers on the corner of the...
The same stone that would be on the piers or on our, on the residential buildings or the clubhouse. Yep.
Yeah, so this would be the stone.
Oh, there you go.
I don't know, I think it looks fine.
I mean, it's really close to that one building. It's very close to building 14, assuming that you haven't renumbered them since the last.
Would the, would the commission be open, you know, given your point, masonry on the west-facing sod, and then as it's currently drawn on the south and east faces?
Look at the landscaping plan again.
Does all of the pictures have just the masonry kind of as a bottom part and then the white stuff on top? Sure, there's...
So that's what we're, that's what, on the detached garages, that's the architectural style. It'd be the masonry on the bottom with the fiber cement above.
Here's a great picture of where it is.
No, so...
But I think that's the old version.
Correct. So that's, that's how we're current, that's the point for discussion, yep.
I think that's the old version.
Oh, you do?
Because that's more of an angled road.
It's much closer to building 14.
Oh, okay. No, there's too many versions.
Those are upright junipers planted at five feet in height. So eventually, they would grow as high and higher than the wall itself. And the upright junipers, they're, they're evergreen and...
Angled towards this building.
Yeah. They, they tend to be deer resistant, too.
Deer?
Yeah, if it were arbor vida, deer, deer love arbor vida, so they get, they get eaten up, but they'll, they tend to leave junipers alone.
That's good to know, okay. I don't know, does anybody have a strong feeling about masonry versus siding?
I thought the siding looked fine, but...
I don't like the siding to the grade, but, I mean, you got it blocked out there. And the compromise from where the folks are coming walking, if they were to put it on the west side, the actual stone, I think that would be a big improvement.
Mm-hmm. And that's a very small wall, unless we want to say both west sides.
Well, it runs, it runs here. Anything stuck there?
Yeah, but we could talk about whether we'd need it on both of those walls, you know, the big wall and the small wall.
I still think people would see it. I have this there. The only thing is I don't like, I don't know why I don't like this mat board going to the grade.
Hmm.
Straight down to the grade. I don't know what's, what the detail is, if you got, you know, concrete, you know, your pad, and then it's lifted up off of it.
Yeah, it has to be six inches above grade anyway, but...
It's still moisture.
Oh, it wicks moisture, as you know, yeah.
Moisture can wick up in it still, yeah.
But it has to be six inches above grade for, for it, per the instructions, the manufacturer's instructions, so.
Page 59.
Got it. Those are the two sides towards the water.
Right. Anybody else have an opinion on that?
You're saying building requirements are that it doesn't go straight to the grade anyway.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, I got no problem with it, no.
I mean, you would see, we'd either see concrete block, or we would see that...
Slab, if they got the slab.
The trim, or, or we would see, I mean, we would see the, the, the masonry. Or the other option is a piece of boral trim or something that's, that's truly moisture resistant at the bottom that you paint. So it wouldn't be quite, it wouldn't terminate like that at all at the bottom. Because you have real problems with moisture getting up in there.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how this is detailed. I'm assuming that our architect would avoid, you know, moisture in that cavity, but, you know, certainly open to any...
Madam Chair, I have a question. Since it is an ordinance requirement, a Canton building requirement to have masonry, are we setting a precedent here? Have we done it before? Any other buildings we allowed?
The ones that come to mind, this was before my time with the township, but in Uptown Apartments, north side of Cherry Hill Road and Cherry Hill Village, those apartments, they've got siding on the dumpsters that matches the buildings. Now, some of the issues with those dumpsters is that they don't have the CMU block on the outside, so they're not as resilient. Since then, I, I can't recall anywhere they've been approved with different materials. Something might come to mind later, but I can't think of anything right now.
Well, if it does, will you call us?
Most likely.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think since it's a PDD, I don't know that we need to be so concerned about setting a precedent. Is that correct? I mean...
Yeah, the PDD, the modifications are unique to the development itself. In this case, the buildings have less than 50% masonry. So I think when the standards were written, I think there was concern about durability and consistency with the buildings on the site, notably with commercial types of buildings. So, you know, when it's a PDD and it's, it's a unique type of development, it becomes less of a precedent. I mean, doesn't mean that someone later on would come to the planning commission and use this as an example of why they want the same modification, but each one has its own unique circumstances.
Okay. Would you be amenable to what Commissioner Janowski suggested, where we do the, the masonry on the right elevation and leave the rear and the left siding to be detailed by your architect?
Yeah, certainly. Yep, on the, the west-facing, frontage-facing.
Yeah, what's labeled right elevation on these drawings, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I, I would, I would like that, too, I think. Is everybody okay with that? I mean, I know you're okay with the siding, but...
Aesthetically, you could probably do better, I don't know. If you variety, but since it's covered with bushes, it won't matter. But you could potentially just make more columns and then put a row on the bottom, use less material, and aesthetically, it would be more appeasing.
Hold on.
I see what you're saying. So have, so instead of doing the entire, like, have columns more or less of masonry?
Yeah, well, the trees, the bushes won't matter, but...
Yeah, I don't know that it's...
That same vertical...
Ban here, and then I don't... I use less material, but we'll take what we went to.
Okay.
You would have saved money.
I feel like I'm in college again. Design critic.
Design student, studio.
Trace paper.
But, yeah, the other way would work fine. Do you agree?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with it, so. All right, Commissioner Singh, you had a question?
I was just saying, the applicant, I think when he, when he was talking, he said he's fine with left and right both. They just did not want to do the rear. But now I think they should be more happy. We are just letting the right side go to on the left side, right? I think they said left and right both they can do, just leave the rear.
Correct. Yeah, so I mean, in this case, I would say less is our preference, obviously. So if you're fine with the right...
500 a square foot?
Right.
Stone's expensive.
Yeah. I mean, I'm okay with what we talked about, just, just the right elevation and not worrying about the back and the left with the piers.
Yep.
Just because you're going to have all those shrubs there. Yeah.
Hi.
Anything else anybody wants to mention or talk about for the... Okay. You just have to push it and turn it on once. Back to the old mics.
Can we go to the site plan? So as far as pedestrian...
Can you talk into your mic?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Pedestrian walks, let's, let's say I'm in unit 12 or building 12, and I want to walk to Home Depot or the new Chick-fil-A. So I'm walking along this path, right? How do I get out?
Yeah, so...
Where am I walking here? Then the clubhouse, it stops, so it's not a continuous walk, and you have a gated entry. How do I get out of here?
Yeah, so if you're coming, specifically where Patrick's mouse is now, you come through the clubhouse. But aside from exiting out of the clubhouse, we have a couple pedestrian access points along Lots Road. So south of the, I should say, north of the, so you come through the clubhouse, you can move, yep, north of the guest parking, onto the sidewalk along Lots. If you don't want to go through the clubhouse, we also have a pedestrian access gate south of the parking as well. If you don't want to go through the clubhouse, we also have a pedestrian access gate south of the parking as well, where that is a key fob gate, so the same fob that would give them access to.
So I gotta go south?
Correct.
I'm not going through the clubhouse if I'm living here, there's no way.
Right, so it would just be, it would be finding one of the, you know, pedestrian access points along Lots and entering through that gate.
And the gated entry is also a fob, is that how that works?
That's correct.
If I carry the fob, can I exit if I'm walking?
Say that again, if.
If I carry the fob, I can always exit without a fob?
Correct, correct, you don't need the fob to exit, correct.
I just see that that could be a potential issue, because anyone that walks, they want to get to the nearest point possible, and that's your north point, and they can't do it right now because of the gate. Can they walk in between the gates?
The vehicular gates?
Yeah, is there a gap there?
No, so there's a, there'll be a fence there, I mean. I need to discuss this further with Jared, see if there's room to accommodate this, I mean.
It's just gonna be an issue.
Consider a connection along the north side of the clubhouse there, which is what I think you were alluding to.
Yeah, I mean, just for.
Me, because we.
For your residents, you know what I mean?
Right, I would say the way that it's currently laid out is pretty typical for our portfolio projects in terms of number of pedestrian connections and, you know, specific connection points. But, you know, we could certainly consider adding an additional connecting point there.
I think that's a good point.
See that on college campuses and all over here, it's a valid point, people will, they'll find the.
Please use the mic.
People will find the least path possible and they'll make their own walk, so. You'll see that on college campuses, all over the place where the grass is worn, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's when you, that's where you build the walks.
Huh?
That's where you build them.
That's right, should, yeah, that's right.
Okay, anything else?
So the parking, everything seventeen foot long, the ordinance allows seventeen feet with a two-foot overhang, is that why?
Yeah, it only allows it if, it allows for the two-foot overhang only if the area adjacent to the parking space has a sidewalk of at least seven feet wide or a lawn area at least seven feet wide, so that if there's two feet of overhang, there's still a five-foot area that someone can still walk.
Okay, and I haven't checked, but you still need to make sure that if there's any landscape, that the car can overhang, so you're not out into the drive, right?
Yeah, and I think Jared could probably speak to this in greater detail, but I think in all of those particular instances.
Jared doesn't want to talk, I can tell.
We have the seven foot. So that we're not killing plants, pulling into plants.
Yeah, so for these.
Jared kind with that, well, generally, when we're planting shrubs and landscape around the parking areas, all of those shrubs are going to be placed greater than two feet behind the curbs there, one, so that the roots, right, are up on the backside of the curb there. But just as you indicated, cars pulling forward, we don't want to knock them over every time, right? So they're typically placed three to four feet back there to allow for the growth, so you don't impact it with the overhang.
Sure. You know, to echo what's already been said, the D cell lane, I feel, is a strong point. Right now, Lots is underdeveloped, and what's the speed limit, do you know? It's unposted, so it's fifty-five, they're flying through there, it's like Ford Road, basically. So regardless of the traffic study says you need it or not, Wayne County's going to give you the minimum, but that small D cell lane will make a huge difference in safety. And I think it's, it's, it should be mandated for this project, and it's, it'll be good for the residents, it'll be good for anyone in the future that uses Lots Road. And the county has bare minimums, just because you're meeting the bare minimums doesn't mean it's a safer design, you know? So I would look at that, the, a small D cell lane on that, on that first leg right there.
You mean going north?
Going north, yeah, I mean, we've done that with other developments on Ford Road. Even though the traffic study doesn't say you need it, it's a safer design for anyone that's going north, pulling to the side, making a right turn.
Less frustrating for the neighbors trying to get past, yeah.
Yeah, and a traffic study will not convey that.
Right.
Regardless of volume, doesn't matter, yeah. Can we go to the east side real quick? I just pulled up Google Earth, you've got these dead ends, and there's, anybody can drive through here right now, except the south one, because it has vegetation, but what's the plan for these two dead ends here?
You're saying on.
That's on Westland.
In Westland, you're saying?
Well, on your property, someone can drive through there right now.
So there, on specifically these two dead ends, I believe there's large boulders on the Westland side?
There isn't on Google Earth. My point is, you develop your property, anybody can drive through there still without any treatment.
Right, so we're, like, we will have a, well, a couple of things, Jared, you can add to this if I miss anything, but I believe we're doing a land, we're doing a slight berm feature.
Okay. Community landscape berm that runs on the east property line there.
Is that on the landscape plan? Okay.
And that will block the southern entrance altogether. The northern one is going to have some trees up in that area, but basically, that kind of dead ends right into the. Blocking that drive right now.
I just.
So there are, there are boulders on the north.
There are boulders on both, it's hard to see on the aerial, but, yeah, I pulled up the street view of the.
I can see it on Google Earth.
The, here on, here on Parkway has boulders, too, they're just covered in.
Manor Drive does, too.
They're just covered in weeds.
Okay.
That's Manor, Manor has them that are visible in the overhead, but I'm saying, from the street view, if you go to the street view of the, of the other one, you can see. Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
The last thing I have is the water utilities, you originally had the loop going from Lots to Manor all through your site, right? And now.
So there's never a connection between the two communities because it would connect into a different community, different billing. So it's looped internally and back to Lots Road there, because we can't have an interconnection.
It was like that on the previous plan, too?
Yeah, never any proposed connection to the city Westland, because that creates some billing and charge.
Okay.
Accounting issues.
No, you're right. I think, Patrick, you were looking into to make sure that there's enough water supply and pressure. We've looked into that for this development.
I'll follow up with our engineers on it, they've looked at previous versions of the same plan in terms of number of units and REUs, but we'll ask them about water pressure, what they'll be required to do during, once they get to engineering review, the fire department will require water pressure testing, and so the looping will help with that. If there's any deficiency in water pressure, then they'll have to make facility improvements to achieve that minimum pressure.
Chick-fil-A uses a lot of water.
But we've, we've done pumps in our buildings if necessary when we get there. And then, speaking of this, our architect actually requested a flow test today so that they could start working on their plumbing.
Yep.
So we're, if, you know, the results of the flow test, you know, indicate that pressure is inadequate, then we'd have pumps in our, in our buildings.
That's all I got. Anyone else? I think everyone's spoken. Nothing else? Okay, yeah, I mean, I support what we've already, I support what you guys have mentioned, the dumpster enclosure, the pedestrian access. And I think the fence is an improvement, thank you for including the piers, the masonry piers. So, anybody want to make a motion?
Where's that thing? No, I'm not ready, but I will make a motion based on the model motion that is in the planning, the staff report. Based on that, I make a motion for approval.
We read the model motion.
I got to read the whole thing? Okay, thank you. No, I got it, I got it here, I just got to find it, bear with me. Reading the model motion, bear with me.
So is this coming back before us again, or unless there's an amendment?
This would come back to the planning commission only if there's an amendment or a change that requires planning commission review. So what's proposed by the applicant is a recommendation for the PDD amendment and a recommendation on the site plan. And then that would go to the board for final action for both.
So the D cell lane issue, how is that being incorporated?
Impose that.
Sure you can.
County road, how do, how can we?
In Canton, still in Canton.
You don't have jurisdiction over it.
Part of the road's in Canton still, so.
Yeah, that may be more of a legal question where their traffic study doesn't, doesn't deem it as warranted and the county hasn't required it. So it would be, it'd be a question of to what degree the township could require additional road improvements. Additional road improvements outside of a traffic study and outside of the county requirements, they could be considered definite benefits as part of a project. They aren't definite benefits as part of the original PDD, which we did note in our letter, there were several definite benefits that were originally included that are maintained, but that wasn't one of them. So if there was to be a dedicated right turn lane or a D cell lane in addition to what the county's requiring, that on the plan would be considered a definite benefit, because it's above and beyond what is required in the traffic study. But definite benefits are items that are mutually agreeable between the, the planning commission and board and the applicant. So that's, that's something that would require additional discussion in terms of the applicant's willingness to do it as well as the incorporated design of what that would look like.
Through the chair, if I might, so I'm going to, I'm put to our council, so council, our ability to be able to impose and or request that a road improvement be made cannot, at least the way I'm understanding it, cannot supersede the effect and the order of the county, although we have an opportunity at this level to be able to say up or down, vote up or down for the PDD amendment based upon our thoughts on the development, is that correct?
What do you mean up or down?
Meaning to support or not support the actual PDD based upon what we've heard tonight.
Is that on, okay, yeah, I, yes, that would be my understanding, I would agree with that.
Okay, so I think we have our answer in terms of what we can and cannot do as it relates to those road improvements, and in conjunction with what we have to do tonight as our job with the PDD amendment.
So you're saying we include in our approval a recommendation that whether it can be enforced or not.
Exactly.
Oh, you're still asking, I thought you were, okay, I'm sorry.
I think we're just digesting, I'm not sure, I mean, unless you want to opine.
Well, I would never do that to you guys on the fly, if you wanted to do like some kind of conditional, you know, motion or something like that, or task me with researching, I can get you an answer by tomorrow, but I would never want to give you an answer on the fly and put you in a position where I haven't gotten to like look into the matter thoroughly.
So if we put, if we put a condition, I'm calling it condition for lack of better word, because I don't know if we can really call it a condition. Patrick, whose job would it be to, to investigate with the county whether they would be in agreement with us to put a D cell lane there?
We would probably have our engineering division reach out to either the county directly or OHM directly, since they were the ones who prepared the review, to see if that's something the county would entertain in terms of either requiring it or allowing it to be a requirement and incorporate it into their review. So that's something we would have to have our engineers discuss directly with the county and their consultant.
So the county will not object to a D cell lane because you're meeting the minimum requirements. They'll object if you don't meet the taper geometrics. So I've done a million of these projects where we put in, you know, a fifty-foot D cell lane and county said, yeah, that's fine. So I'm okay with a condition that if the county agrees to it, since they have jurisdiction, then that would be a condition. So we're not assuming jurisdiction over a Wayne County roadway.
So we're putting a condition out if the county agrees?
Sure.
So it just falls off if the county doesn't agree?
That's fine, I'm okay with that. Because there are jurisdiction, like you said.
Just clarification, you said a D cell lane, you got tapers now, you're saying that, that lane should go down maybe fifty feet?
You ever drive Back Road just north of, northbound from Michigan Avenue?
Yes.
There's D cell lanes all over Back Road now.
Oh.
As a result of the crazy traffic. That, those D cell lanes make a huge difference.
No, I agree with you, I agree with you, yeah.
So that's what the D cell lane.
Particularly if they're doing fifty-five, no.
Especially fifty-five, and since it's a PDD, I think you can make a condition like that provided that Wayne County agrees with it.
Well, I think to Patrick's point, I think you could, if nothing else, add as a community benefit.
And it's really for the safety of the residents and the safety of the users of Lots Road, there is no downside to that.
No, I agree, it helps the developer.
Through the chair, real quick, so I just want to be sure that, that we kind of don't get too up in front of our skis. So tonight, we want to be able to vote on the PDD amendment, and we have an opportunity, council, hear me out, we have an opportunity to add a recommendation, to add, and Commissioner Cruz, I was the one who brought up the whole thing, but if we can't, can't make them, we can't, but I want to make sure that the recommendation is a part of anyone's thought process and their yay or nay in this vote, did I get that right?
I think what I'm understanding is that you want us to look into this issue, it sounds like engineering is going to reach out to the county. This is a condition that, if possible, is going to get added to the PDD agreement, that's what I'm understanding.
Right, we, yes, in, in the model motion.
In the model motion, yes.
All right.
Okay.
All right, Clarence, take it away.
This is PDD and site plan, remember?
And site plan.
In the model motion.
In the model motion, says it, right? I move to recommend approval of amendment number three to the Spring at Hollow Creek PDD, formerly known as Wellington on the Hollow, is that Truman Place and Truman Place in planning application number zero four four nine dash PDDDDA dash eight zero six five on the subject of parcels, parcel number one, zero four nine dash nine nine dash zero zero one dash seven one two, also, zero four nine dash nine nine zero zero one seven one three dash seven one three, zero four nine dash nine nine dash zero zero one dash seven four, seven one four, and zero four nine dash nine nine dash one, zero zero one dash seven one six, as proposed, subject to the state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions, revisiting or revising the PDD agreement to the satisfaction of township legal counsel and planning division staff, including listing all modifications in exhibit C, adding stone wainscoting around the sides of garage buildings and maintaining building, revising the dumpster enclosure to comply with section two point one four of the zoning ordinance. Should I add here deceleration lane?
Can I?
Recommendation, I think.
Recommendation, I think.
Dumpster enclosure is not as per the.
I'm sorry? Of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
As agreed to during discussions in our meeting. Where should I put deceleration lane? For, for?
Yeah, I would add it as four, yeah.
Provision for a deceleration lane is recommended.
Subject.
Study, subject to county approval. Further, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for the Springs at Hollow Creek in planning.
Willow Creek.
Willow Creek. Man, I'm reading it. Okay. Planning application number 049-SPD-8063, which includes 280 units on 41 acres as proposed, subject to the approval of amendment number three to the P, to the PDD by the Township Board, any necessary revisions to the plan in accordance with the zoning ordinance and compliance with all state, county, and township requirements. That was my first one.
Wonderful job. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Support.
All right. Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Watkins. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
I would love to. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster, not here. Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you very much for all your work. Thanks for keeping track of our motions for us, Jared. We appreciate that. All right. Yeah, yeah. Good luck with the project. We can't wait to see it. All right. So we have item number two is the EV charging station ordinance. Patrick, please tell us more about it.
Okay, thank you. There's not really much to put on the screen, but at, just bring this up. Great, it's frozen.
Oh, the blue circle of death.
Yep.
Just tell us what the supervisor, just tell us what the supervisor wants.
All right. Yeah, I could leave that up.
Looks so wintery.
All right, now I gotta.
Or else it's cotton, I'm not sure.
Or any new gas stations are remodeled.
Yeah. Yeah, so at a previous Planning Commission meeting, we had a public hearing on the EV charging ordinance, and we recommended approval of the ordinance as written. And yeah, that was at the January 8th meeting. And so as it was written, it did not include provisions specific to gas station requirements. And in discussing this with the supervisor and the supervisor's office, the supervisor had wanted the Planning Commission to review again to determine adding, whether to add provisions for gas stations for either Level 2 or Level 3 chargers installed whenever there are existing gas stations that redevelop or whenever there are new gas stations proposed. So the Planning Commission recommended approval at the January 8th meeting, and the next step of that process would be for it to go to the Township Board for consideration. This hasn't yet been transferred over to the Board for consideration. This is a discussion that we wanted to have first so that when the Board reviews it, it's, it's comprehensive and any outstanding questions or inquiries have been resolved. So rather than going to the Board with the amendment as proposed, we wanted to bring it back to the Planning Commission to see if there were any additional provisions that we wanted to add in there regarding EV chargers specific to gas station land uses. If that's the case, we can come back at next week's meeting or a later meeting with detailed text depending on what we discussed tonight. And then we can come up with different formulas, whether it's a certain number or if it's based on fuel pumps or fuel pump islands. So generally, we just wanted to put this to the Planning Commission, have a discussion and see where the Planning Commission wanted to go, if the Planning Commission wanted to stick with what it recommended, or if we want to reconsider revising the text for gas stations. So that's, that's all we have.
May I speak? Thank you. So at this point, you're not asking us to say, we definitely want this or we definitely don't. We could say, oh, well, I wouldn't mind hearing more about it and you would bring more information next week.
Right. In addition to anything that you want us to look into or any kind of formulas we wanted to look at or anything policy related, we can take a deeper dive on.
Right. I mean, is it something we could ask for? And I guess I'd be interested in, is this something that is happening throughout the state? Are, are other communities requiring this?
Question.
I, I can speak from my perspective and say that we've received a lot of inquiries from our client base on like EV ordinances and, you know, how to navigate different agreements that have been coming through. We've had some inquiries from people who want to set up charging stations and want to put advertisements on them and those kinds of things. So there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion. I will say this is like a hot issue right now.
I guess, I'm not opposed to the idea. My concern is, I guess it's more of a space issue than a call for lack for nothing else. Most of the gas stations are on relatively small parcels of property. There's a few exceptions. I mean, the, the new BJ's gas station really ends up being much bigger in space than I pictured it when it came through here. But most gas stations are on relatively small pieces of property. And they're designed and configured very, for traffic flow very tightly. I mean, given that they have convenience stores there and then also given the fact that the, the gas tankers have to come through and that sort of thing. I would be concerned that any gas station owner would be, have issue with tying up one or two parking spaces with a car charging at an EV station for a half hour to an hour. And I know, Patrick, you mentioned if you did a, a, um, Level 3 charger, you know, it goes much faster, but my understanding about those two, they're also very expensive. So to impose that on a potential gas station owner, I, I think is, is problematic. Again, I'm not opposed to the idea. I just question how you do it logistically, that's all.
I think that's why I'd be interested in just more information. I'm not ready to make a decision either way.
I propose to let, oh, I propose to let the market decide. So if it's of value to the gas station, let them do it. Why should we, you know, worry about it right now? And as it comes about, we can actually adapt it as it becomes real. Because right now, it's for us to put all this work and all this effort into this. I know it sounds like a lot's going to happen, but you watch the, watch what's going on with the EVs, you know, and how they're going up and down and the technologies and everything changes. So anything we do right now, I, smart to look at it, but I don't know if now's the right, right time to make a decision. So I agree.
I see another advantage here. If they gotta be there 30 minutes, it's an opportunity for someone to have a retail opportunity there too. Because now you gotta capture the audience. So I'm thinking people are going to be thinking differently about these than they will a regular gas station, is how I am.
I kind of disagree because when they go into a convenience store at the gas station, they're going in and out. They're grabbing.
No, 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 I'm saying, this may not, this may not work at a gas station. That's what I was going to say.
Well, I see, I see more merit to having EV charging stations at, say, let's take the shopping center that we, we've been talking about where the, where you're talking about putting the, the community gathering area and where Buffalo Wild Wings is. I see a retail opportunity there. Someone parks their car for 30 minutes to an hour, then they go into Dunham's or Marsh, or Marshall's or whatever, or go to Buffalo Wild Wings or whatever while their car's charging. I see, I see more applicability in a place like that than I do at the gas station, actually.
Yeah.
Myers in Ann Arbor that has a whole set of them. You can park there and then go shop.
With the top Canton development, the Level 3s are close to Ford Road by the Portillo's and by the Chick-fil-A where the Level 3s are there, people getting off the highway can use them, they can go inside, get something to eat or sit outside.
Where they're going to be there for a bit. I, I, I agree with.
It's hard to mandate that, to require that. As a, as a gas station owner, let them decide if they have the space and want to accommodate that on their own, let the market dictate it, like you said, you know? But it's hard to impose an ordinance requirement for a gas station.
I tend to agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Janowski, about what's going on in the EV space anyway right now. Not that it's, not that I think it's going away, but I think, I feel like this is kind of a double edged sword, sword in a way. Where the biggest issue with the EV question right now is lack of infrastructure. And here we are talking about whether we impose it at a gas station, adding infrastructure. But to actually impose it on someone's development, till we know further where, where this is going, I, I think, I have no problem with having design guidelines and all, and all that sort of thing, but I think to take it further than we already have, I think, I think it is a good opportunity to wait and see or just to see more.
So some of my clients, for example, they were Erie Downtown Development Corporation, you know, it's huge, huge development, restoration, new buildings, three city blocks, all in a real low income area. At first, they're like, no, I don't want no, no, no parking or EV charging, none whatsoever. But at the end of the development, and I've been working on it since 2019, they're corning holes right now to put the battery charging in because it makes economic sense for them and it is attractive to the people that are going to be parking in there. So it just did it by itself before, it didn't work, and they decided to do it and we added the infrastructure that they needed.
Were those Level 3s or 2s?
Level 2s.
Okay.
I think Level 3s to impose, I think imposing Level 3s on, if you're, if you're going to do this, imposing Level 3s on a gas station, just the cost alone, I think is, I don't think that's.
The amount of power that you have to bring and the cost, just look at carpet or, you know, copper, the price of copper, electricians nowadays. Duck casement, I think it was $255, you know, whatever for a duck casement before with six 4-inch conduits, and I'm sure it's probably about double now, and it's probably not enough power for the requirements.
Patrick is definitely Level 3, imposing that, it's a huge expense, but we can talk about what areas of Canton does need Level 3, and then can we impose those, these guidelines for those particular areas that if you plan on a new gas station in that area of this size, then we want a Level 3. This is an area designated for that. But you don't want Level 3 on every corner of Canton, but certain areas definitely we would love to see that. So we can also look into different areas where we can impose this.
Yeah, we can look at specific areas, for example, by the highway, for someone who's just traveling and they need to get off the highway and, and charge for a half hour, 45 minutes. For someone who either lives in the community, works in the community, they may not use the highway charger as much because they can charge at their home or their place of business or a public area that's otherwise available to them while they're here. So we can take a closer look at proximity to highways and see how that factors. And I think there's some data that's out there in terms of electrical capacity, so we can look at maps in terms of where existing infrastructure is and maybe where it's going and see if we can try to find some alignment there.
I, I will say that like one of the big things I've seen is just the municipality going direct with the, the electric charging station companies, the people who actually build this kind of infrastructure and they're contracting and leasing out, you know, municipal property. And that's been a big hot one lately, right? Especially in like downtown districts and things like that.
You have to speak into the morning.
I'm sorry. I, I've just noticed that there's been an uptick in requests to review contracts with the, the people who build the charging stations, right? To lease property from the municipality directly, you know, in downtown areas and things like that, and, and kind of sharing in that, I guess, profit and whatnot. So I, I've seen that too, instead of imposing it directly on like your local businesses, the township or the municipality takes it on. Do you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So you lease out the space to them and then you contract with them directly on upkeep and, you know, all those kinds of things. Who pays the utility? Who does all these different things? And, and it's worked out nicely so far.
One of the things that we want to look at is whether to require them at, get either new gas stations or gas stations that are redeveloping, like when they take out the pumps and they redo the island.
So are, are you guys all feeling like we don't even want Patrick to, to look into this more? That we just are going to say no to this? Or do we want to find out more about?
I think we want to find more about it, not outright no. Especially certain areas, we would like to get those EV chargers in Canton. I mean, we, we want to keep pace with, with the technology, so we just.
I, I think that the example that, that legal counsel provided is actually, again, the market pays for it. We're going to put, put a tax on this guy. I'm a guy, I'm going to open a gas station, or I'm going to buy one, or I'm going to buy one for my kid, and now I gotta put this, this electrical charger in, and it doesn't work functionally, as we already just spoke about. There's opportunities for like at restaurants, they could sell the service. And then leasing land out in certain areas with a company that's suited to actually make a profit off of it. And then it's, it's not a, what is that? Net, net gain, net zero gain? So, or net sum gain? And it's actually non, non-zero net gain. So you actually have winning, winning on the, on both sides instead of someone just giving something away. So both people win and it's not just someone being taxed.
I'm not sure that's, I understand what you're saying, but I, I agree with what.
It's, it's a new term that I forget, I, it popped up many times and I've been reading about it, so.
Been waiting to you.
Net, net sum gain, yeah. Net zero sum.
It seems like there's one thing in terms of getting more information just about where we could put it and how we could do it, which is different than saying, yeah, we want to know more about how we can require gas stations to have them.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I, I agree that I don't think we can require them. It doesn't feel right. But I wouldn't mind learning more about how we could encourage them within the community.
And I think we've talked, I mean, I, maybe we haven't spoken of it directly, but I think as we were going through the master plan process, I think we've kind of touched on it here and there about having appropriate places to have groupings of EVs charging stations. And I know, and I, I agree, the, the public space landscape is, it's kind of low hanging fruit in a way, in that, you know, the township controls the property, can kind of do what it wants with it. The only, the only question kind of related to what Commissioner Singh said is, do you have township property at all, the, kind of the key locations that you'd like to see? But, you know, that's why you look at the map and you see where we're at. I, I think we, I think we kind of keep an eye open to see where all this is going. I don't think necessarily it requires us to do anything else to this ordinance. I think this ordinance can go forward the way it is, but if things change or we find a better idea, there's nothing that says it can't be amended.
Does that mean we, we need to vote on moving it forward tonight?
Um, no, I think the Planning Commission's already made a motion on that.
Okay.
So where it is now, it's still in the process that it'll proceed to the Township Board of Trustees. If we have any additional information to come back with or if there's any additional findings that the Board of Trustees wants, then we can come back to the Planning Commission at that time. So there's really nothing imminent. This can be, this can be a discussion topic. There's not a motion that's required.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we keep a data of ownership of EVs in Canton? Is it?
Um, I don't have access to that. I don't know if it's something that maybe the Secretary of State has, but I don't know if they published numbers on that.
Yeah, the State will have it.
Sure they saw it.
Okay, we'll come back with more if, if we have. Okay, we'll come back with more if, if we have more.
Thank you. So then we can segue into the master plan discussion. Erin, is that you this time?
It's me. Hello, everyone.
Is this going to be exciting and fun?
It's going to be exciting and fun and very lengthy.
Oh.
No, this is just a quick update, so I just wanted to let everyone know that last Thursday, we had the first of our two master plan open houses. It took place at the summit from 2:00 to 7:00. And just so you know, with the, all the advertising that we've done and all the excitement that we've generated in the community, we had a line out the door at 2:00 o'clock. We had people trying to get in even before, as we were setting up. So there was a lot of interest. There was a really good flow of people. We'd say we'd have, we have 63 names that signed our, our list, sign-in sheet. Not everyone did, I know that. So I'd say we had anywhere between 75 and 100 people there. Yes. So we had, we had a lot of great participation. We had a lot of great conversations with some people. A lot of return people that we've, we've seen through other community events or people that we know here who've come to the planning commission meetings for one thing or another. And then there's some people that I haven't met yet or, or talked to before, so that was a really, really wonderful thing. We are having our second master plan open house this Thursday, February 29th, from 2:00 to 7:00. It will be in this room. So I encourage you all to tell your friends, family, neighbors, please come on by yourselves. We had a lot of really great participation. We have a lot of really fun boards and information and, and conceptual designs. I mean, you've all seen them all before, so it's nothing new to you, but to see it all kind of presented is really wonderful. So please make sure you pass that out. I'm sorry?
Will there be games and prizes, like pin the tail on the master plan or anything?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're making it really engaging and really fun.
Oh, fun, okay.
So please, please tell your friends, family, neighbors to, to come out and talk to us. In addition to that, we know that, that people have, have lives and are busy and are unable to attend. So starting Friday, Feb, or March, that would be March 1st, we're going to have the materials available on our township website, and people will be able to provide comments for two weeks. So we really want to make sure that we have reached out to as many people and given people as much opportunity to give us feedback, to talk to us as possible. After that, we will be finalizing the draft, and we'll be bringing those materials to you in, in the coming weeks, so.
That's it?
That was it, really. That was it.
Wow. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for keeping it so, so short. I will entertain, oh, we have public comment. Does any member of the public want to speak at this point? I will entertain motions to adjourn.
Move adjournment, Madam Chair. Support.
I'm going to say that we had a motion from Commissioner Weber and support from Commissioner Watkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, good night.